Are recording?
Very good.
Yes, two people and one of them is Tom.
So we are in.
Let me check. Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call our Bloomington City Council listening session to order on this Monday, February 26th. Thanks, everybody for being here. We have four people, possibly five, because we have a tentative person. Tom, who was the caller on WebEx last week, we're going to start off with him. And then in order of the folks that we have on my list here, Sally Ness, Brian Hoffman, Brian, are you here? All right, Mary Slindy, okay, and then Tim Rubkey. Very good. So what we'll do, we'll plan on four right now, because Brian was tentative to begin with, and if he shows up, we'll try and work him in. But what we'll do is we have until 6:15, so we'll break up the half hour into about six-minute chunks or so, and make sure everybody gets the same opportunity to speak in the same amount of time. So just wanted to make sure that we're clear on that. As we get to six minutes, I'm going to stop everybody, not because I'm a bad guy, because I want everybody to have the same amount of time to speak. So Safa, is that Tom on WebEx right now?
Oh, probably Councilmember Nelson.
Tom, are you on the phone? Caller, phone number beginning with 6125 and ending with 70.
Yeah, this is Sean Nelson.
You identify yourself, please.
Yeah, this is Sean.
Okay, that's Sean. All right.
Oh, sorry. And caller with the phone number 9524, ending in 58, would you please identify yourself?
Thank you.
I cannot hear anything. It's very low right now.
That's.
Um, this is Mike List.
Mike, do you know where the volume is on here?
List, you heard on there too.
Mike, where are you, Mike?
Oh, yeah.
Um, there we go. There's Mike. Mike, and Mike, you were our caller last week, is that correct?
Yes.
Very good. Mike, you are on. Why don't you proceed? Go right ahead.
Sure, I'm just following up on a couple of activities from would be probably midsummer last year, right around the June 26 timeframe, where we talked about some of the issues that we were having in our backyard, made you aware of those types of things. The neighborhood got together. I believe we contacted the safety officer. We had the general meetings. We met, we talked, discussed several things. I did receive a follow-up email from Mr. Verbeke on October 30th, just asking how things were going, you know, to which my reply was, since that happened, basically, none of us are using our backyards just because of what was taking place. So, you know, we really have no idea, you know, whether things are approved or not. But one of the things that that from the previous discussions is that there would be conversations by the council, or you would look into it. So I was just trying to get some follow-up on, you know, action items, or any conversations that the council may have had taken. So I guess I would just ask Councilman Mua, who's my at-large, is there anything that you've looked into, or any comments or thoughts in what we were dealing with?
Councilmember?
Hey, Mike, I know our staff has been working and getting in touch with Hennessy County. As far as I've heard, we've submitted the paperwork, we've let them know, and they're working through with the company that's running the home. So I would pass it off to Jamie if there's anything else that we've done, or anything we can escalate to.
Mr. Brugge? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Mua. We haven't had any recent contact on this property that I'm aware of, either from a code enforcement, or an environmental health, or a police perspective. When I last talked to Mr. List, we asked that, you know, if they did have any situations, or did observe anything that was concerning to call police right away. As we've shared with council in the past, with the situation here is that this is a group home setting neighborhood, and there's a pretty significant limitation for municipalities to restrict group homes, other than trying to work with property managers to ensure that they are operating in a safe manner, in a manner compliant with law. My understanding from our environmental health folks and our police force is that the management company is behaving as we would expect them to.
So, Mike, let me ask, through the winter here, obviously, it's different than the spring, summer, and fall. Have there been ongoing issues through the winter, given the mild winter we've had? Have there been issues, or additional or ongoing issues?
Um, well, again, not necessarily, not as visible, because we're certainly not out of the side as much. So, you know, I wouldn't be able to speak to that. And then, so just based on the track record and everything, I mean, have you looked into historically the performance, or have we talked to the state or the county for, you know, getting, you know, better oversight, or better controls on these types of facilities?
Mr. Brugge? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. List, I did, I'm doing this from memory from last fall, because I don't have the information at my fingertips. But my recollection was that we did look into the operator of the facility, and we don't have a history of the operator not being a good operator. I think that staff is comfortable that they have been, that they've been performing the responsibilities in a reasonable manner. Often, what happens in a situation like this is you have a specific occupant of the home that may have some more challenges than others, and they tend to exhibit themselves outwardly. And, you know, there isn't a lot of, there isn't a lot that we can do when it comes to individual behavior, if it is not violating the law. Now, if it's a circumstance, again, where you feel that it is threatening behavior, or some other form of violent behavior, or they're actually doing something that's breaking the law, then we certainly want you to call 911 right away. But that's not our understanding of the situation in that particular facility.
Mike, how about this, as we're getting close to time here. Mr. Brugge, would it be possible, as the weather's going to warm up in spring, everybody's getting out into their backyard again, could we at least have somebody from the BPD stop by, and have a discussion about being good neighbors, and what it means to be a good neighbor, especially in adjoining backyards, and how it could make life much better for everybody, and just try and get some understanding of what the neighbors are going through, and perhaps they could check the behavior of the residents, and the residents themselves could check their own behavior. That might be, that might be a problem.
I can follow up on that, Mr. Mayor.
If we follow up on that, Mike, and you check back in here, we'll let you know when we set that up, and we could continue this conversation. How does that sound?
Okay, yeah, no, I just wanted to, but I kind of backed away from all of it, but just because, you know, you have the election going on, and then the new council members, and so I just kind of like, okay, let's back off from this a little bit, but just wanted to see exactly where we're at, and how things were progressing, so.
Sounds good. We've got your, we've got your contact info, Mike. We will follow up. Okay?
Thanks, Tom. Have a nice evening.
Thanks, Mike. All right, next up, Sally.
Okay, I received an email dated February 15, 2024, from the city manager, and it states, quote, "We've reviewed the applicable statute. We do not believe there is a violation. It is important to note that the buses are not parking, rather they are temporarily standing," unquote. The state statute states, quote, "A person shall not park a motor vehicle in or obstruct access to a parking space," unquote. I'm going to say that again, quote, "A person shall not park a motor vehicle in or obstruct access to a parking space," unquote. The school blocking access to the parking spaces, the handicap parking spaces, and then the buses temporarily standing is an obstruction. This is confirmed in an email from the state of Minnesota's Minnesota Council on Disability that states, quote, "Disability parking cannot be used for bus loading," unquote. Again, from the Minnesota Council on Disability states, "Disability parking cannot be used for bus loading." As I stated at the last listening session, there is a parking plan where the handicap parking is located on the south end of the building. I have two questions. One, why did the city not require compliance to the state statute, and require Darrell Faruk to follow the parking plan where the handicap parking was located on the south end of the building? Two, what other state statutes does the city, does the city not require compliance?
Mr. Brugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I did just reconfirm with the police chief less than an hour ago, Sally, that the information that we sent you previously is correct. And if you'd like to have a conversation with him, I can connect you.
So the rest of you councilmembers, you all know how handicap parking works. I read the state statute. Are you in disagreement with the state statute, then, I mean?
Question, Sally. Have you seen buses parked in the handicap parking spots?
Again, park a motor vehicle in or obstruct access to a parking space.
So if you see that happen, what have we suggested that you do?
You want me to call the police?
Yes.
Which I've already got an issue with, because, again, I was in my neighbor's driveway. The police came up to my car.
I'm not talking the past, Sally. Let's move forward here.
Well, if we don't figure out the past, moving forward doesn't make sense. And you having me call the police, when that is actually where the buses are supposed to be. According to the plan, that is where the buses are supposed to be. Handicap parking is supposed to be on the south end. So what are the police going to do?
There was a change, Sally. We know where the parking is now. We know where the buses load. If you see an instance where they're blocking the handicapped access, please call the police. Please dial 911 and ask them to come out.
And then what will the police do?
They will come and rectify the situation.
Which is how? Discuss it with them?
We've talked in the past, Sally. Again, we're repeating many things we've talked about in the past. Our police department and many of our city officials work toward compliance, rather than simply going up and writing a ticket, or berating someone, or having a bus towed. They would work toward compliance. And-
And compliance would be having a plan that doesn't have bus loading and unloading where there's handicap parking. So why am I involving the police? Why aren't you, as a city manager, going, planning, we got to get over there, and we need to figure this out. This parking is not working. This parking plan that we have here doesn't work. We shouldn't have a resident, who you guys have already, when I sit in the area, send the police out after me. You shouldn't require me to call the police on something that I'm telling you happens twice a day. You know it happens twice a day. You know that the parking plan shows handicap parking where buses are picking up and dropping off. So, again, it makes no sense. And yes, we'll go over this again, because what you're saying does not make sense. The parking plan does not work. You don't plan handicap parking where you have buses picking up and dropping off. The handicap parking needs to be relocated, and that wouldn't be up to the police, that would be up to the planning department. You as mayor?
And, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, please. Our planning department, our attorney's office, our police department, all looked at what you provided. The answer I gave you is the answer that the three of them agreed on.
And so then my question, the second part was, what other state statutes don't we comply with? I mean, you just, all of these people said, no, we don't have to follow that state statute. Everyone else does, but we don't, we don't have to require the building to follow a state statute. What other ones? And give us a list. Give residents a list, so we know which state statutes our city complies with and does not comply with. I mean, do you, can you think of any of, I mean, city council? I mean, is, you don't find this alarming that we have a state statute that we've got our, it sounds like the police department, the city manager, planning, they're all going, oh, we don't have to follow that particular state statute. I mean-
Sally, we're getting close to time here. I'll say, I appreciate your advocacy on behalf of the disability community in Bloomington, and folks who park at Darrell Faruk. And if we hear, if we hear additional complaints from our friends at Darrell Faruk, if this isn't working, as you say, we'll wait for them. So, we are at time, so thank you so very much. Mr. Hoffman, have you arrived yet? I didn't see anybody else walk in. Very good, then we'll go to Mary. Mary Slindy?
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Mary Slindy. I live at 2100 Dixon Drive in Bloomington, have lived there in the same house for 54 years. I'm a retired school administrator, so I know that you folk are not going to please all of the people all of the time. Trust me, I've been there, and I know that. However, there are three things that I'd like to talk about tonight, and they are, in a way, very general, and I'll give you some examples. The first one is that I would really encourage you to listen carefully to your constituents. Although most of you were re-elected in November, there are large numbers of people in the city who did not vote, or did not vote for you. So please listen to them. I'll point out a couple of specifics that have received negative perception among a lot of people. The first one is the 86th and Penn, what I refer to as debacle. When it was first initiated and presented to you, it was 15 townhouses, 15 four-bedroom townhouses on 80,000 square feet. It didn't make any sense to your constituents, and so they presented a petition and said, please, relook at this. And the city council voted in favor of-
That is incorrect, Mary. We voted it down. The city-
First time.
We voted it down, the city was sued, and we lost in court, and we had no legal standing to vote it down the second time through, so then it was approved. The council agreed, listened very closely to the neighborhood, and agreed, and voted it down the first time through, only after court order was it approved.
I understand there was a lawsuit.
There was.
But if the lawsuit, if it had been voted down the first time, there would have been no lawsuit.
It was voted down the first time, that's why there was a lawsuit.
Actually, helps. I mean, I think there were two votes on that issue.
I believe I'm correct, that you voted for it the first time, and then-
The mayor and I voted no the first time. Then the second, there were conditions.
Yeah.
And then the second time.
Yes.
The emergency, yeah.
So what it, what it did, in our belief, what happened was that you opened yourselves up to a lawsuit. If it had been voted down at the beginning, and said, this isn't the right thing for this property. It's one example of people not feeling good about what the city council did. Okay, the reason that the petition was set out in the first place, your commitment to low-income housing certainly wasn't going to be met by that, because there were $400,000 townhouses. And secondly, the nightmare has yet to become a reality with the traffic.
So, can I say one quick thing, too? I would say that the majority of people on council now are not the same people that voted.
Okay.
So just, just to be clear, with the public, who's, Lona wasn't on council, Sa wasn't on council, Krit wasn't on council. So, I'm just, and the two that others that are here, well, we voted for it, Tim voted against it, Jenna voted against it. So, maybe the, maybe the new, if it had come back, if it come to us today, I promise you, I would vote it no. Let's put it that way.
Thank you. All right.
And Steve Furlong, the guy who runs-
I want to, I want to go on, and I know I have a short period of time. You refinished our street recently, and it is a disaster. I know that you went with, my husband had conversation with the city, and you went with lower bid. And anybody who walks, or drives, or walks their dog on that street, this pebbly grit moves up the driveway and into my house. I don't know who made that choice, but it probably wasn't a good one. And hopefully, you're getting that feedback and can change that. Okay, I want to go on from listening to spending. And what I really encourage you to do is to think about whose money you're spending. Is it yours, or is it mine? I want to believe that it's mine, that you, I have given you the responsibility to spend my money. And I want you to discern, and I want you to spend wisely. Sending several people to Europe at the time of the World Fair disaster was the wrong thing to do. When people are struggling to buy groceries in this community, and they see their elected officials perhaps working very hard in Europe, but going off to Europe, that's not spending wisely. What happened? I'm sorry it happened. I didn't think it was a good idea in the first place, but nobody asked me. That's money gone. It's gone, and it can never be returned.
And Mary, if you could wrap up here, we're past the six minutes. So if you, I know you have one more point, if you wanted to address that very-
Right, is perception. And you might argue with me that it's only the perception that we are spending too much money. But perception is critically important to the health of this city. For example, the perception in this city is that our police and fire department are the finest, maybe in the country. Even with the transition to full-time fire department, that perception is true. But how did that perception come about? Because those departments, day in and day out, provide outstanding service to this community. They have been consistently attentive to the needs of our neighbors, to us, when we needed them. And they've reached out into the community in so many ways. My perception is that they are wonderful city workers. Thank you to those departments for-
Mary, we're going to have to wrap up here. We're at over seven and a half minutes now.
Yeah, but you interrupted me twice, so.
Thank you for coming this evening, Mary. If, well, if you want to come back next week, we'd love to continue this conversation. Thank you so very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, if I can follow up on the comment about just Dixon Drive, I have not heard any concerns about the quality of the work. I'll follow up with our public works department. But I did want to respond to the comment about selecting a bidder that was the low bid. By state law, we have to accept the lowest responsible bid. And so if there, if there are concerns with the quality of the work, I'll make sure that we follow up with public works. Yep, thank you.
Tim Rubkey?
Hi. Thanks for your time and professionalism, and listening to the citizens and their concerns. I will be three minutes. So, did you know that this week is National Invasive Species Awareness Week? No, it's nothing to celebrate. However, it is a nationwide event that aims to raise awareness about invasive species, their threat, and what can be done to prevent their spread. The Bloomington Natural Resource Survey found at least 15 different invasive species in Central Park and along the Nine Mile Creek. Wow. I hope that City Hall and the Park and Rec Department are having serious conversations to discuss policies, plans, and improvements that can be made to prevent and manage invasive and exotic species in our community. With the financial assistance of the increased local sales tax that was recently passed, the upcoming Nine Mile Creek Corridor Renewal Project is a perfect opportunity to address this disturbing issue, which might otherwise seem overly costly and daunting. So, moderate to high-quality natural areas remain in Central Park and along the Nine Mile Creek. The city of Bloomington and the Park and Rec Department should focus on connecting and protecting these remnant natural areas using the following guidelines. One, prevent forest fragmentation by facilitating development that retains forest blocks in large natural shapes. Two, move invasive species throughout Moore and Central Park and along Nine Mile Creek. Three, replant with native seeds, plants, and trees. Four, link existing forested land by creating natural connective corridors to facilitate the potential movement of native plant species. Paved paths and boardwalks would counter this vital initiative. The 0.5% local sales tax was approved by Bloomington residents, in part due to their love for natural areas. Central Park and the Nine Mile Creek Corridor have been poorly maintained and managed over the past 30 years. Therefore, despite being reluctant to increase taxes, residents voted to restore this rare urban oasis. It is crucial it is done, and it's done right this time. Let's remove invasives, let's seed, and let's plant. Let's work together to restore the nine. That's all.
Thank you. And you know, we've got, we have a natural resources plan within the city, and it covers the entire city in a lot of different ways. And, and you're right, invasives are an issue. And what I appreciate is, I know there's at least a couple of groups now that are working independently of the city, that are trying to remove invasives. I know out in Marsh Park, behind my home, there's been a group out there for more than a year now, digging out buckthorn, I think. And the results have been notable. They really have. And so it's, it's a combination of things. I agree that there needs to be work done on invasives. I agree that the city needs to lead the way, and we need to really work on this project with Nine Mile. We've got the opportunity here. But I think this is a, this is an opportunity as well for members of the community to come forward and grab a shovel and get out there and help out in a lot of different ways. And I don't know, you're nodding, I don't know if you've been doing that as well.
Not, a little bit, yes.
A little bit, yeah, because I think it's one of those opportunities. I know the group in Marsh Park, they've been working very closely with the city, in terms of removal, in terms of when they cut things back, the city comes and clears. And so it's been, it's been a group partnership. It's been a partnership between the community group and the, and the city to work there. I'd love to see more possibilities like that.
That's great. I've met a lot of people from far and wide personally, that have come to the park, and said, we come here because there's no place like it, the area. We could bring our dogs here. I feel like I'm up north, like I'm in the middle of the woods in the city. So it is really a neat thing.
Yeah, no, and I know it's the case down in the river bottoms as well, where the invasives down there are hideous in a lot of ways, out of control. And unfortunately, there's no easy or inexpensive way to deal with it.
Short of grazing animals, it's hard to maintain it.
Yeah.
Petually.
I personally am for goats. Always be for goats, Mr. Mayor.
No.
They're all goats.
I know that Normandale brings in goats every year.
It's not a good, you're not a good solution to restoration, because they are unselective. They eat everything, including-
Yeah, they're not a permanent, they're not a permanent solution, actually.
Maybe sheep would be better.
No, yeah, the only way, yeah, no, goats are not.
That's sort of the issue.
Yep, exactly. Anything else, Mr. Rubkey? Thank you very much. Thanks for coming in today. All right, we got our council, we're almost right on time. Is there anybody else online, or did Mr. Hoffman, did we ever hear from him?
We did not.
Okay, very good. Very good. We're at time here. We need to head downstairs for our meeting, look for a motion to adjourn our listening session.
So.
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned. We'll head downstairs, and we'll see you in 15 minutes or so.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody who was here tonight.